All right, so I think we're recording. So welcome to the Water Commissioners Meeting tonight, April 10th. Before we begin, I just want to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on Facebook Live, and it will be on local cable and it's stored there for cable on demand. It doesn't look like there's microphones because they're hidden around in the wall, so that does apply to the audience. So just know that it will pick up everything, even a whisper. And with that, we're going to go right into, well, first, let me introduce the members of the board. Jen, you want to start?
Yes, Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Donnie Fulgenetti.
And I'm Craig Barger.
And then we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. So we'll go right into this. Our item one is a discussion and vote for a Declaration of State of Water Supply Conservation Phase Three. And we have Rich Cheney, the Water Division Operations Manager, and David Field, PPW Director.
Good evening. Thank you all for taking up a subject matter that's near and dear in my heart, so water restrictions. This time of year always play in a big role as to trying to stay within our Water Management Act permit. So there's two usual numbers that reflect after the year, the RGPC, which is the residential gallons per use per person today. Each one of those numbers, usually we look to try to get that to 65 or below. And thankfully, the last couple of years, because we enacted Tier Three water restrictions, we have managed to bring our number below that 65. So we do have a large amount of water construction projects going on at five of our wells presently. And we also have a significant water main project in that area on Red Mill Road, which also kind of necessitates our advanced heightened act of looking for Tier Three water restrictions. So the Tier Three is one day a week for even, one day a week for odd, only between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. And so those are some of the basic guidelines for the Tier Three. Last year, I think we, the number was less than 10, that we actually exceeded 3 million gallons a day during the summer months. So usually 3 million gallons a day is really pushing our water system, pushing the infrastructure. You run the risk of doing damage to the wells. It also has a huge significant electrical cost. So in order to try to prevent undue damage to our resources and with all the construction, I'm asking you all to embrace Tier Three this year.
Great. Before I take questions, I do want to note that our other Select Board member, Jamie Stevens, was on camera and I caught it out of the corner of my eye, but I was already down the path passing. So I do want to acknowledge that he is here by Zoom as he travels. So any questions so far from anyone on the board?
No, why not?
No.
Did this last year as well?
Yeah, pretty standard.
So I think that going out of the gate at a Level Three is really smart. And there was some differences in years that we started at two and went to three, but especially when we are looking at water preservation. And I know that the green communities did some water conservation social media, and we're really promoting that out there. The question that always comes up is, what about people that have private wells? And I know the answer, but do you want to share that?
Usually, the answer from our regulators, the DFP, is that those private well owners should be following the same bylaws that we have for water restrictions.
Okay. But we can't hold them to it with regards to penalties because it's not part of the public infrastructure? Or do they get penalties also if they're watering outside of the restrictions?
No, we just try to, you know, embrace or enforce that kind of following our same water restrictions so that doesn't create that. But as you know, it's a hard thing to try to enforce on somebody who's paid for that piece of infrastructure on the problem.
Okay. I think it really is important, especially in the summer months, and especially when we're building the water infrastructure, to be able to take it easy on some of that water relief during the summer. Particularly, we've had very extreme droughts over the past few years. And when we have a lot of rain, it looks like, well, we must have tons of water because it's rained a lot, but it doesn't absorb into the infrastructure the same way when we have large, large rainstorms at once, right?
Yeah, so we don't ever know what is our fate each year. And sometimes we've had really wet July's. And conversely, like last year, it was, you know, hot weather all season long. And there was lots of enforcement by the state for the drought task force. And we're going to see more and more of that, you know, playing out where the drought task force asks us to increase the levels if we have lower levels to start from. And then it's always trying to catch up with the communication with that, with the public.
Right. So it always comes up with people saying, well, I see watering on the wrong days and the wrong hours. And what do they do when that happens?
So last year, we had a lot of calls. So it's hard for me, but what I've kind of asked my staff is, you know, we're out there looking for violators. Nothing replaces a picture or photograph that's indisputable. So that's where I try to go. We'll take the information that a resident gives us, but without a picture, without some showing of a sprinkler system running on the wrong day, it's hard for me to kind of enforce those things. So pictures are indisputable in my world.
Okay, that's a point I'll take. Thank you for that.
And the first time you get a warning, and I say this every year that we have this meeting, is that I got the big sticker on my front door one year when my husband didn't set the sprinklers up at the right time. So drove him under the bus. But I know that whoever the house is, it doesn't matter who they are or what they are. So we're asking everybody to just pitch in. Excellent. Well, if there's no other questions, we're going to make a motion, Chris.
Motion to declare a Phase Three State of Water Supply Conservation from May 1, 2023 to November 1, 2023.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Jamie? Okay, that's unanimous. The next item that we have is for minutes, the acceptance of the minutes dated December 19th, 2023.
Second, that motion.
Lamb and Barger, all in favor? Jamie? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, and with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move, Barger.
Did we, did we adjourn that? Okay. So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor to adjourn? Unanimous. Excellent.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich and David.
Gentlemen.
We'll go into our regular meeting, so welcome to the Select Board Meeting of April 10th. Please join me in the Select Board.
United States of America, a free republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So I'll make another mention for our people that are just tuning into this meeting, that this meeting is being recorded, live streamed on Facebook and local cable, and available on demand. We have full board here tonight. We have Jamie Stevens on Zoom, Jennifer Stacy. Frame blocker. Mark Lamb, Craig Barger, I'm Donnie Fulgenetti, we have Connor Reed, our Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, Assistant Town Administrator Elizabeth Heck, Executive Assistant. Connor, am I missing something?
Although it's have to be by roll call if there's a hybrid participant.
Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't realize that. All right, so the first item that we have here is the Arbor Day Proclamation. Correct, you want to read that?
Sure. Arbor Day Proclamation 2023. Whereas the legislators of the great and general court, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, have adopted an act regarding the designation of Arbor Day throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas the purpose of the designation of Arbor Day throughout the nation is to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees, to encourage the harvesting of forest crops by approved conservation methods, and to encourage the production of all, protection of all forests from the scourge of devastating fires, insects, and disease that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands as well as their wildlife. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by weeding water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, produce oxygen, clean the air, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees increase property values and beautify our community. Whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal and provide an enduring heritage to succeeding generations. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day in the Town of Easton, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Given under our hand and seal of the Town of Easton this 10th day of April in the year of our Lord 2023.
Okay, anybody have any comments or questions about the Arbor Day Proclamation? All right, Easton is a tree city. I think we've been a tree city for 28 or 29 years.
Higher than that, yeah.
Is it higher than that? So we do care a lot about Arbor Day. And if somebody would like to make a motion to accept the proclamation?
So move, Barger. Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, we'll do a roll call vote.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Terrific, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing for a poll petition.
Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 166, Section 22, to hold a public hearing in the Caliina A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Town Street, Easton, Mass. On Monday, April 10th, 2023, at 6:05 p.m. To consider an act on a petition of the Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, to install one J.O. pole on Lincoln Street, beginning at a point approximately 110 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Lincoln Street and Old Stable Lane, installing new pole 17-50 roadside to serve New Home 9, Reardon Way. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 30562795, dated March 24th, 2023, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
Good evening, my name is Thomas. I'm here on behalf of National Grid to petition for pole 17-15, as you said, on the corner of Reardon Way, Lincoln Street, to serve the new home on 9, Reardon.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
Not currently.
So this is a brand-new pole?
Correct.
Okay, so we do have one from the public that had a question. If you want to come up and introduce yourself.
Public, get over there.
Yes, please. Just introduce yourself and your street address.
Hi, my name is Mary. I live at 88 Lincoln Street.
Your last name also Mary.
Martini. And I was unaware that this was even happening. I did not get notification. So I was surprised to see that they were doing anything. I don't even know what pole it is. I just caught, my neighbor showed me a notification of a notice that she got for hearing. And I don't know what's, I didn't even know that they were building a house down the street until I saw a lot of stakes all on my property. So I had no idea what's going on at which pole. I know this one back, this one in front, so.
So this is your hole here?
Yep.
On this side of the Reardon Way here. The only other way to get power down to 9 Reardon was to do substantial tree cutting to get the required wires down there. So the easiest way is to set a new pole on the street and then just go all underground.
So you're going on my property or 86, you're going on 86?
So there's a right-of-way easement along Reardon Way, and it's going to go between that easement and 86.
All right, so it's not going to affect my property?
No.
So the pole's going to be over there.
Correct.
What's going to happen when you start to jackhammer and dig for the pole? I have a 120-year-old house. My foundation is rocks. Is it going to shimmy, shake, and now I'm going to get water? Or what's going to happen with, you're widening, right? So what's going to happen when you widen? Is the water table going to change? Is under earth going, I don't know. This is all new to me, but I don't want, you know, my house sits lower than Reardon, Reardon Way.
The only thing National Grid is doing is setting the pole. Everything else is private, and it's going to be owned and developed by them.
Okay, so when you set the pole, jackhammering?
I believe that cobor, they just drill out a hole and then they use it.
Is that going to affect my property by shaking, shimmering, or anything underground? Because I fixed the pole over here when somebody hit it, and that shook my whole house. And now I have windows that don't open properly when they did when I first moved in.
Yeah, when they pull these, when they drill for the poles, they just use a giant auger. It doesn't shake and bang around.
Okay, because this one's supported by another one, so they were jackhammering. I was home when it happened.
Yeah, I'm not sure why they would have done that.
Yeah, they were outside for quite some time. And that's how I know I had a home inspection, my windows closed. Now they don't close on that side. So I can't open and shut them. I have to get that taken care of somehow. So that was my concern with you putting a pole. What's going to happen, you know, with that side of my house now?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
My question, do you have one other, just introduce yourself and your background.
I'm Carla Ramsey. I live at 2 Reardon Way. And I was also hoping to see where the pole was, something.
So you would be, you'd be right here?
Right here. Yep.
Yeah, so if you're coming out, it'll be on the right side.
Right here at the stop?
Yeah.
Okay. So are the wires going to be underground?
They are.
They are going to be underground. So this is the concern that I have. So this was not approved, Reardon Way is a private way. It's not maintained by the town. It's not plowed by the town. It's not paved by the town. It's not maintained by the town. So my issue here is that you're putting in a pole and you want to now come down under the street. And this was never approved. I went to Stephanie Danielson in regards to this. She was unable to give me any information. She told me there was a behind closed door that approved for Reardon Way to be widened. So this pole, again, is just a whole insult as to what's going on in Reardon Way.
To be clear, the pole's going in Lincoln Street. It'll be existing right-of-way for Lincoln Street.
Correct.
Okay.
But Reardon Way is a private way. And to get those wires down, they're going to have to rip up Reardon Way to do so. And that's not something that we're in agreement of. We spent $7,500 and paid that recently on our off.
And what did you say, we, or you?
The neighbors.
Okay.
The neighbors' thing.
And is that something that you and the folks who own 9 Reardon Way have been working on, or?
So 9 Reardon Way hasn't, hasn't been, hasn't approached us at all. There, I have the plans that were approved originally, and they did not include widening Reardon Way. And there has been no notice in regards to widening Reardon Way. There's been just talk from the builder that they're just going to go ahead and do that. Backstreet, you know, we had all purple and pink lines all throughout our street, stakes all over, and no one's notified us of this. The captain originally for the fire department had said that it would be fine as is. And something changed along the way, and they decided they're going to rip it up. And they've not notified or had agreement from any of the residents on Reardon Way to date.
And just to be specific, when you say they, you mean the owners of 9?
Correct.
Okay.
They have not yet, the builders.
Okay. So we can follow up with you on that?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that the road, and I don't have personal knowledge of that, so I will check with planning, but the road widening is not directly related to the wire?
No.
Correct? Okay.
But to get down there, you have to affect Reardon Way to get down there?
That, again, that's only the developer.
Okay, so you're just going to put a pole on Lincoln?
Correct.
You're not going to run any wires?
You're going to have a service terminate there.
The installed pipe is on the contractor of building the house, so. As far as the pipe owner's a brown.
So that wasn't approved, that's what I'm saying. That pipe was not approved by the owners of Reardon Way.
But to be clear, that's not something the Select Board would approve at all under any circumstances. It's not the body that would be involved.
Yeah, no, I do understand what you're saying.
Okay. But for my own clarification, and you're installing a pole and you're dropping service there, you're not actually proceeding down Reardon.
No, but that is an overhead.
Okay.
No, no, as far, so once the approved pipe is in the ground.
Then you would run the, run the.
Then we can pull wires through, right. As far as putting the.
And the approved pipe in the ground.
Who approved the pipe?
That's on the builder.
Yeah, it was.
It's not on us.
Right, what was your name again?
Carla Ramsey. I sent to the Commissioner's office as well. And I dropped off a letter here as well to notify the situation that's been going on.
Okay, and you were to Reardon?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
I have a couple of statements up. Her husband, Eric Ramsey. So I guess my question is, widening the road was from emergency vehicles so they could access in any emergency? Yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have football poles basically on both corners.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I, can I, yeah, clarify through the chair, please? And then if the chair would like to march you away and look that up or do that.
Two big topics here, so obviously we have a football. So my question is, have you considered, if you're widening the road and so importantly widen the road, how do you plan on getting a fire truck around the poles in an emergency? There's no way you're making that turn unless they're 20 feet hard?
This is true.
So it's kind of like hypocrisy if you kind of think about it, you know? Like, oh, we need a pole. Oh, we need to widen the road. You're destroying an ancient rock wall, you're digging away 100-year-old oak trees and doing all this? So, I mean, yeah, there has to be some compassion for the owners of Reardon Way when you don't help us plow, you don't help us fill pockets, you don't help us, you know? So we take care of it, we're fine with that. But now when it's time to sell some land, make some money, I don't know, it's like you can just come right on in and do what you want. We have not got, that letter that we got from today was the first communication we got from the townies. Not about selling the land, not about Reardon Ways, not about electric poles, not about widening the road, not about taking down oak trees, nothing. It doesn't, not spoken to us at all. And I know that's against the laws.
Selling what land?
Accessing Reardon Way to sell that nine, number nine, Reardon Way.
Was it owned by the town?
No, it was owned by.
So because we would not notify the town?
No, they haven't looked through permitting. There was wetlands and front pools, and we haven't hearing 18 months ago about it.
So that's not before this board? So we wouldn't notify anybody about it? It doesn't come before this.
All right, so you're not even notifying us about anything?
No, because it doesn't come before this board. Why would we notify? We don't even get notified about that.
Can you talk to your colleagues and constituents about notifying us in the future?
They'll do what they have to do by the state of the law. That's not what we're here for. We're here to talk about poll petitions, so.
All right, so the poll petition seems odd. You're going to get a fire truck around that in an emergency where you need a lot of workers.
That's true. Because of hyphen there right now.
And the question for you, is the wires go straight down the pole?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Sure.
I would like to ask the chief, have you looked at that for a fire truck getting down there? Or is that something we need to explore?
So, thank you. The pole placement, I have not seen, so I'd like to see that through our comment. But generally, I can speak to the road itself if you'd like.
Sure.
So when we took a look at that plan, that was, because I had to go through the permitting process, the feedback we provided, the planning department on that, was that if a house would go in there, that we would need a wider access to get a truck down in there. It's more important that we can get in, we can take our time getting out. Because obviously getting out will be difficult because we have to back down. There's no way to turn around, even with a wider road. But it's more important that we can get in, which the way it is now, getting in there is extremely difficult, especially if you're even further back. So our feedback for the planning purposes was to request the pole of the road to be widened if a house was going to go there. If it wasn't, then the road stays the way it is. Subsequently, apparently, the house was approved. And that was a requirement under that permit. So as far as that goes, that's how that process came to be with fire. As far as the pole placement, I like to take a look at that. Because sometimes when a pole is in the way for access from one direction versus another, if it's on one corner, we have a pre-plan that we would commit it in a different direction so that we don't have to deal with the pole. But that's something we would have to plan. Usually, we can work around that when we have a pole right on a corner. You would just know that you got to come in, whether it's from the Bay Road side that you got to come in from down the uptown side.
Right.
But you get one on that side right there, too.
Yeah, and we'd have to take a look at that for our planning purposes.
And a higher, too. Right there as well.
Yeah.
Which is hard for my super resentment to get.
So, Carter, is this something that we should table? Or how do you recommend that we handle this?
Well, the only question for the board is regarding the approval of the pole placement on Lincoln Street. If the board wants to condition it on the fire department reviewing its location relative to the lift to ensure that there's no concerns with any apparatus, you could do so. And if the chief for some reason feels that that's not doable, it would have to come back.
Okay, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we've dealt with this many times as far as pole placement. And when we get, you know, five feet in one way, it can make a difference over another, and we can work through that for access purposes.
All right. Any questions or comments from anyone on the board?
Those pole places, yeah.
All right, let's take a motion.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
The other pole is.
Come on, just complete on the motion.
The wires are going to be stripped down here. Costs us a lot.
So the other pole is on the corner in front of my house. So if you're going to do something with that one, how does that affect this one? And if you, is that going to cut? Now, if you're going to widen the road, is that going to take, that's going to cut some of my property? And my house sits lower on Reardon than it does on Lincoln. So Reardon's here and my house is down here. So that's, you know, a big concern for me on when you're doing stuff, if you're going to limit the limit, what's going to happen with that? And if you do approve a pole and it goes underneath, what's going to happen underneath? As you're going down on both sides, if you have to widen to get wires underneath?
So that's not really in front of this board this board is really just approving the location of the pole, so.
The one pole.
Okay, okay.
Just so you're aware, there's another one. Thanks.
All right, Craig, do you live in any emotional contingent on the fire chief reviewing and?
Absolutely. So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb. And it's a roll call vote. Start with you, Jeff.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Thank you. All right, thanks everyone for being here. We appreciate your input. Thank you. Steph, we have some licenses and permits. One-day liquor license. So the first one is the liquor license for Stonemaui College and the Equestrian Team Banker active on Washington Street. It's April 29th from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Police detail is not required. Any comments or questions from the board? Make a motion.
I move to have the permit to Stonemaui College Equestrian Team Banker, 320 Washington Street, April 29th, 2023, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. All in favor, roll call vote.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
It's yes, it's yes.
Terrific. Next, we have La Bay Venue Private First Communion at 574 Washington Street. May 7th, 2023, 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. They have applied for this one-day VRY license for a private event, and an Easton police detail is not required.
I move to approve of La Bay Venue Private First Communion, 574 Washington Street. May 7th, 2023, 7:00 to 7:00 p.m. to midnight.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
It's yes, it's yes.
Great. All right, next, we have, we have some appointments. The Public Spaces Committee. We have Thomas Lowell. Is it on here? No. So this is an uncontested, I'm checking right here. Uncontested, the Public Spaces Committee. Who is it? I'm sorry. Mr. Lowell has degrees in economics and management and has been collaborative, thoughtful, and willing to serve. So this is the only applicant that we have for this. And unless anybody objects, I would take a motion to appoint Mr. Lowell to the Public Spaces Committee.
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb.
Stacy Lowell.
Lamb Lowell.
Fulgenetti Lowell.
Barger Lowell.
Stevens Lowell.
Next, we have a discussion and vote for Waste Management, Curbside Waste and Recycling Contract Extension, fiscal '24 to '26.
Sure, thank you, Donnie. So items five and six are related to each other. We just had to pick one to go first. So the first item is an extension of the existing curbside waste and recycling pickup contract of town has. Originally entered into in 2007 with Waste Management. This would be the Fifth Amendment. What we are proposing is a three-year amendment starting this July through the end of fiscal '26, which would be June 30th of 2026. In your packet, you had a kind of term summary update from Waste Management that outlined any kind of changes here for the secondary item because these things are intrinsically linked. It's an enterprise-funded account. Basically, it's funded through fees rather than through general taxation. Anytime we negotiate an extension with Waste Management, we, through our, my office, probably of course, and most of all, the finance department, they run an accounting assessment of what those rate structures would do to the rate that this board sets. We have tried to minimize any rate increases to be as possible over the years. The last time we did was two and a half years ago. Like almost any other market, there's been some major impacts in waste collection. Recycling is really volatile. And so as part of this, we are recommending we would consider an increase from 90 to 100 per quarter and a right sizing of extra barrels, which were basically half of a quarterly fee, set as far as we can tell back in 2007 and not adjusted over time. So we want to make sure that that more appropriately reflects adding 50% more trash or recycling from the town. So your packet, again, has a kind of. So, um, your packet again has a kind of, uh, broad overview summary from Waste Management. We have, uh, representatives from Waste Management here tonight to answer any questions of what has about the proposal, what that means for service in the Easton, as well as the Finance Director and Director of Public Works for any questions about the financial impact or the operational impact for our, uh, departments. Finally, it says a, a note, the formal, uh, extension was provided to you earlier today, you have a hard copy in front of you, there's still drafting going back and forth between our council and Waste Management's council on one, uh, paragraph. So, uh, if the board is inclined to approve, it would just be conditioned on final, uh, approval from Town Council, um, which I would recommend provided there's no objections, but happy to, we don't know who you would like to come up first, we allow folks here.
How are we gonna reach the town to come up?
Sure.
I'm by Jim LaSalle, Waste Management Services.
Thank you.
Glad to have our oral conference and thanks for your services.
We're glad you're here tonight and, uh, Waste Management has been a good partner to the community for quite a while now. And, uh, in particular, some of your drivers get lots of shout-outs on social media that, uh, the neighbors come to really have a great bond with them, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate that service. Uh, any comments or questions from anyone on the board on the details of what's being offered?
Are there any changes, aside from the annual hundred dollars?
Uh, just one small change to, to try to, um, improve services in, in a particular section, so we're just gonna move some houses from one day to another, just to balance out the routes of the program, the popularity of the program. It's, it's grown over the years and so now we've got certain route days that are getting just a bit too long, so we're gonna just move and we'll notify all the homes of that. Uh, but beyond that, everything else is fairly business as usual. The other thing might be that, um, with the bulk item collection program, um, we're gonna ask folks to register for when there is the, the full collection townwide. Uh, and that will allow us to really know where everything is and be able to provide hopefully a higher level of service when it comes to that. So those are really the two, I think, significant changes.
Okay, Jim, be specific correctly, not wrong. On the folks who are getting moved to a different day, that would be moving them up from Friday to Thursday, you think?
Uh, no, there's, there's about four hundred homes affected.
Yes.
Uh, and I have a list of streets and they're on various days through the week. A couple of homes on Monday are gonna be moved to Thursday, it's just routing. But they're all gonna be moved to Thursday, I'll send you the list, um, and then everything is gonna be.
And there's gonna be provision of functionally an additional half truck, is that about right?
Yeah, we're putting in a full route on Thursday, an additional route, so it's gonna be split in half, half recycling and half trash, yeah, half route.
Uh, because I, and one of the things we worked on with Public Works in negotiating this was making sure that we try to minimize, uh, you know, missed pickup, super equipment failures, things that may still have any additional trucks towards the end, we could help, uh, stop some of that from slipping into the weekend. As far as the bulk item, that's one where, um, you know, we are hesitant to change, uh, how these things work, but not everyone puts something out. And so depending on the street you're on, if, if you're on a smaller street in particular, if the driver doesn't see something out immediately, i- it's easier to miss. So, we're hopeful that by doing a pre-registration, which I think at first will be just from a toll-free number, eventually perhaps online, um, for no cost, uh, that they will have better data on where these items actually are, so that there's fewer misses and less time spent overall going back. Uh, because for our concern, frequently what folks will do is call Public Works if that happens, and so it ends up kind of tying up a bottleneck in a T P W.
I think that's a good idea though, because it seems like it would be more efficient for everybody and, um, the less trucks we have to have on the roads.
Right.
Drive, Easton is a really big town, as, uh, the snowplow drivers probably will tell you, right? If you have to go up and down every road in the town, that seems kind of wasteful and not great for the environment, so, um, I think that that, that was a great idea. Um, what about the recycling and, uh, curbside recycling? So just as a reminder, there's, you know, you don't take mattresses, you don't take household textiles. Um, they're, the green communities, again, they promoted how to recycle best practices and even myself, you know, people are still stumped with what can you put in the recycling, what can you not, um, you know, to rinse stuff out so that there's no food in it. Uh, we used to think you couldn't put pizza boxes in, but now you can as long as there's no food attached to it, you know? Um, so, will you be doing any kind of campaigns that we could share through social media about the details of that?
Yeah, so, so, uh, we typically will do a, an annual flyer to everybody that kind of gives the outline of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, that will happen. Um, and with that, there's some links, uh, that are actually on the town website as well, we'll call them, um, there's a, a couple of places where you can go to really get a, a pretty good clear, uh, idea of what's acceptable and what is it. And one of them is, uh, collaboration with the state, um, recyclersmart.org. That really has a great, uh, recyclopedia, so you can go in and put in an item and it'll say, hey, that's generally acceptable in a curbside recycling program. So, no bowling balls, pizza boxes are good, but no pizza, and then, yeah, it's really just, we, we always say, uh, you know, dry, no liquids, no food. Um, and then, you know, um, just work from the list of common acceptable recyclables. And by the way, we do, um, audit and check, uh, every community's recyclables that come into our facility and, um, Easton has a, you know, has a good track record of doing a good job, so we'll continue to, to promote that.
And that has to do with the contamination levels, which you might want us to talk to so folks at home can understand, uh, what happens with that, with that issue of contamination.
Yeah, I mean, contamination is, uh, you know, certainly, uh, became very, very prevalent, um, uh, about four or five years ago. It's always been a, an issue, but it became very prevalent four or five years ago when markets changed and, uh, got much stricter on what they would accept. And so, when there is a lot of, we'll call it non-recyclable materials in a, in a recycling container, um, it becomes very problematic for the facility that's cleaning that and separating that and bailing that into its different, you know, commodities, if you will. And, uh, it can be expensive, it can be expensive because you have to pull all of that material out. It then has to be disposed of as solid waste as opposed to recyclables and, and even the community could, you know, ultimately pay a, a fee if there was a really high level of contamination. And that's why it's, you know, it's really important that this town has done a, a great job at, you know, kind of communicating out, um, and keeping that, you know, under control, but it's something that we have to be vigilant about.
Well, I think something that we talked about a lot and when that first came up was the plastic bags, that you get the plastic grocery bags get caught in the gears when they go through single stream recycling. So hopefully, I, I'll just take the opportunity to say it again in case people are watching, uh, don't put your, those plastic grocery bags in your, uh, in your recycling. I try to use my, um, reusable bags every once in a while, don't forget, I end up with some of those plastic bags and you can recycle those by bringing them back to the grocery stores, they have bins there that you can get rid of all of those, so. Um, and then with textile recycling, we do have bins at the schools and they collect money for that, so, um, any, they take, you know, shoes, sneakers, sheets, towels, any kind of textiles, clothes, whatever, that you put in those bins, so, um, I use that quite often myself and it's very helpful. So just a reminder for people not to put that in their, um, household trash. Alright, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, wrangle back to the bulk pickup, so this, I love the pre-registration, by the way, it's fantastic and over time I think it'll really, um, have a big impact. Um, but in that kind of learning and getting folks used to phase, like, um, if someone put something out and didn't be registered, will it get picked up as trucks drive by or kind of what will be the transition of like that?
Great question, great question, yeah. So our, our thing is, uh, you know, we'll continue to, to collect everything, so when a driver is out there doing the, the sweet collection for the bulk, you know, as they're going along, they're gonna collect the materials that are out, even if it wasn't, you know, called in.
Yeah.
Um, and then, uh, and so what will happen is if it happens to be, you know, a small street and if nobody registered on that small street and the truck doesn't go down, at least we'll, we will know and I'll be able to provide that feedback to the resident about how they can register in the future. But for, you know, coming out of the blocks, we will, we'll still continue to go around and collect everything that's out there.
Will you like a sticker system or reach out to them directly or how will that look?
No, we, we would have to work through the, the town because you have the, the communication, you have the resident's name, address, phone number.
Yeah.
And so a lot of times when we run into issues that we collaborate and then we can get a notice out to the folks.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Jamie, any questions?
I just want to thank, uh, Waste Management.
They hosted our Green Communities Committee, uh, at one of the recycling facilities and really walked through, so a lot of the best practices that we're putting together, uh, come stem directed from that meeting. Um, so we appreciate that, there's a lot of, uh, good that'll come of the education that we need from that.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
And I think it will just take this opportunity just to say to people that anytime you cannot use single purpose plastic, uh, avoid plastic water bottles, if you can change your laundry detergent to something that isn't a big plastic jug, uh, every little bit helps for, for the environment and, uh, those things are hard to, hard to get rid of, so. Um, I know that a lot of people that really, uh, do that and have been really trying to switch to more reusable, um, vessels for things and it really does make a big difference. Alright, Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
So we, we're, we're doing, the first one is the, is the contract extension based upon one item that needs to be.
Yes, so our, our request to the board is willing a contingent approval of this contract amendment, uh, pending final, um, language resolution with Town Council.
So move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes. Yes.
Okay, and then the next vote will be for the rate, uh, rate change.
Sure, so attached to your packet, there's a cover memo, uh, from Finance Director Wendy Nightingale, just giving a background of the program and its history. Again, as I noted, we've tried to spread out, uh, rate increases as much as possible as the market has changed, it's been about, it has been two and a half years since the last one. Uh, during that time, both the producer, uh, price index and consumer price index have grown by more than what this proposed increase is, um, although again, we don't do it until we absolutely have to. Uh, Finance Department feels that moving from ninety to one hundred would be sufficient, uh, to get us through the first year, we can't make promises about multi-year, but we, we feel comfortable about between that and, um, rightsizing the extra cards, that's, that's a very small number of folks, you have a few hundred extra trash cards in town and less than one hundred extra recycling cards. Uh, making sure that those are paying their proportional, uh, rate, um, that plus the surplus we carry should hopefully pose a good position without having to raise rates too much at once. So Wendy's here, if there's any questions about the analysis, it's in your packet. Dave's here, is there any questions about the operational impact?
So this would be a graceful first, first year and then we go back, come back and talk about the second year, or how do you want to do that?
We would come back when we have to, so part of our just ongoing budget management is that we, we look at these, the performance of these enterprise accounts every year as part of our, uh, budgeting process. And so if during renewable budget building process that starts in the fall preceding a, a coming July, uh, Wendy or Dave have data either on some ownership numbers or on the revenue coming in, that would lead us to think that, uh, rate's not gonna cut it, we would come back to the board with an analysis showing the expected shortfall in recommendation.
Okay, so the proposed increase is from ninety to one hundred dollars per quarter?
Correct.
So move, Barger. Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
Great, thank you.
I would just ask for a second vote on that relating to the optional extra, uh, cards. Right now, those are at twenty-two fifty, those have not been increased proportionally with the program. And so we're, uh, recommending that additional extra cards, uh, be set at fifty, um, per extra.
As opposed to twenty-two fifty?
As opposed to twenty-two fifty, so we think that it was, that is quite a jump, but we think that over time, as we adjusted the base program fee, which is, what, four thousand-ish customers pay, we didn't tie the extra cards to that as a counter function and so it's just gone. As far as we can tell, fifteen, uh, ten-plus years ago, we have increased.
Right, the, the collection cost alone is twenty-seven dollars a quarter.
Right, so per, per unit, per quarter. So right now, the base program users would be subsidizing the heavy users if we didn't rightsize them.
So I move to increase the extra trash recycling bounce to twenty-five to fifty dollars.
Second, Lamb.
Twenty-two fifty.
I'm sorry, twenty-two fifty to fifty dollars.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
Thank you. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, bye.
Wayne, up there. Yeah, somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody, Chief, could you grab Wayne by the door?
So, next we have a discussion and vote on Contract P C D twenty twenty-three dash seven for S W C A Historic Resources Survey and Inventory.
Sure, so I believe he's coming now, but in your packet, in it, there's a cover letter from Community Planner Wendy Vitler and a contract with S W C A Incorporated for Survey Services, uh, historical commission, uh, from time to time, contracts with, uh, surveyors for historic property inventory work, and this would be another round of this. Uh.
Wendy's on upstairs.
Oh, okay. Uh, this current phase would be for survey, approximately sixty, uh, potential historic properties documenting significant seventeenth and eighteenth century headstones and four cemeteries. Annual Town Meeting approved, in two thousand and eighteen approved thirty thousand dollars of C D A funding for this project. Uh, the team which did the previous surveys has retired, very few consultants have been available for this work, several unsuccessful rounds of requesting qualifications on both sides of the pandemic delay finding responsive better until now, which is why you have it before you tonight.
Okay. Any comments or questions, should we wait for Wayne if any, anyone has any, or?
Do you have some questions, I mean, I'm supportive of the general questions.
He should be here.
Okay.
I told him, I told him twice for the delay.
I thought I saw him outside.
He was, he was up there.
I would have skipped over him.
Uh, his department is Citizens Academy tonight, he may have, we could, because we always have someone double booked, um. Let's see what I can fill in, Mark.
Okay, um, again, I, no worries of support of this, I'm curious about the documentation, what is included in document? And if we're documenting this now, what do we have that exists?
So I can answer that, so if you look at the Mappers database and you see R I S, you'll see what, so, I know I looked it from my house, you get a whole history of who lived in your house, what did they do?
These are for headstones.
Oh, for headstones.
Uh, they do have a decent, please, specific scope in here, let me just try and find, so you're, you're specific to the headstones, okay. Phase three entails the documentation of a limited number of significant seventeenth and eighteenth century headstones in Easton's historic cemeteries. The consultant will update the cemetery inventories in accordance with Massachusetts Historical Commission Form E burial ground involving preliminary research, fieldwork and photography of each headstone. They'll then produce burial ground forms from four cemeteries. Historical narratives will focus on seventeenth and eighteenth century burials. They will consult with Easton historians who incorporate their research into four inventory forms. Uh, the Easton Cemetery Commission's cemetery database from March of two thousand twenty-two identifies a hundred and seventy-two headstones, uh, existing in Easton dating before eighteen hundred. The consultant will produce inventory forms for, for cemeteries including Easton South Cemetery on four seventy-three Washington Street, Pratt Cemetery at four seventy-four Washington. The Church Street will bury around at forty-six Church Street and the Cynthia Drake Cemetery at forty-five Church Street. The consultant will notify the local project owner two months in advance of fieldwork and coordinate with volunteers for the cleaning of a number of insignificant headstones. Predetermined significant headstones limited to fifteen per cemetery will be photographed for inclusion in the inventory submission to Massachusetts Historical Commission. And so the deliverable, again, of that will be the four forms inventory, inventory and before cemeteries with a focus on the earliest headstones of each.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Jamie?
No, thank you.
Alright, would you like to make a motion, Craig?
I move to approve the contract with, what's the name of the book, I'm sorry.
It's an air.
S W C A P C D two thousand twenty-three dash oh seven Historic Resource Survey and Inventory.
And the amount, uh, would be twenty-eight thousand six hundred?
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
Alright, uh, next up, we have a discussion and vote on Contract E F D twenty twenty-three dash oh three for mobile solution radios for the Fire Department. Chief, uh, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, so we do, we're, uh, very fortunate to be funny tonight, we had a proposal to our contract to replace our portable radios and fifty-five portable radios and ten of our mobile radios, the difference, our portable radios will, when you see us cap- The difference, our portable radios, when you see us carrying around, mobile radios are the ones that go in the actual trucks and mount in there. So that would be replacing technology that's twenty years old, out of date, not able to be replaced and fixed. We're actually taking parts from our old radios that don't work anymore, that might have a good part, and putting that good part in another radio that's broken to keep it going. So it's time and we really appreciate the support going forward. The purchases for Motorola, the radios are very specific to the buyer service. They're not cheap, as you can see, but there's reason for that. It really revolves around, our radios in particular have to be what they call intrinsically safe, which means when you use them, you key up the microphone to talk, there's no sparks. So when we're in a gassed environment, a paranormal environment, we don't ignite the gas. They also need to be designed to take the heat of being inside a building and the various tough life that they have with us and the work that we do. So that's why you see the cost of these radios so high. But they're a baby of what we do and we expect to get a good life out of them. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have about them.
Any questions?
Just one question about fifty, fifty-five units. Can you just talk, I mean, the ten, excuse, I had that question too, should I answer that one already? Fifty-five is for firefighters to carry?
So yeah, so we have firefighters that carry them and each apparatus has a truck radio assigned to it. That can be taken if one person's radio doesn't work. If, let's say, if it fails at a scene, they have another radio they can take out of the truck as a spare.
Okay.
And then we also use those spares when one of the radios has to go up for repair. We could take it from an apparatus, issue it to a firefighter, so it kind of serve a dual role. And it it's one of those things that it does happen, radios do break on fire scenes unfortunately, and we have we have that spare, which is which is great, because our accountability is a hundred percent radio-based. It tracks when you key up our microphones, it shows up on the screen as Semrec, our name, what channel we're on, all that information that goes with it.
Chief, I wanted to make that connectivity unless I'm misunderstanding, part of this is necessary too to make sure that we have technological compliance with Semrec standards as they move forward, because they'll be updating, is it microwave or radio wave technology for receivers in the four towns? And the other communities are also updating their radios in concert, is that right?
Correct, so all four towns in Semrec are upgrading their radios, which includes the portables, mobiles, and the the base stations, if you will, the pieces that receive and transmit to Semrec, the HIROs basically. Those are all being replaced. Semrec is doing the the base station side, that mounts the antennas throughout town to hear us. So those are all going to be, they're all Motorola products and they're all designed to work together in concert and improve our radio system dramatically. Very much looking forward to hearing how much better our radio sound when this whole thing is built out.
When you're not patching them back together with pieces of other radios, how was the typical lifespan based on like basically wear and tear that you guys put them through?
Ten years, maybe stretched to fifteen for some of them.
Okay.
But you'll see some time, the ones that get the heaviest use, they'll probably be ten-year lifespan.
Okay.
And they're on twenty.
Say it again.
Sorry, the current ones are on twenty.
They're at twenty, yeah, yeah.
I can't believe you called that long.
And that's why we're at that, that probably, you know, run Peter to PayPal to get them on.
Jamie, any comments, questions?
No, thank you very much, Chief.
So this is funded through Town Meeting Vote, just had it, twenty, uh, twenty-two special Town Meeting approvals. All right, would you like to make a motion, Craig?
Move to approve the three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the fifty-five portable radios and nine mobile radios for the fire department.
And it's awarding the contract to Motorola Solutions.
Motorola, I'm sorry.
Contract EFD two thousand twenty-three dash seven, okay.
Second, Lam.
So that's Barger and Lam?
Stacy, yes.
Lam, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Barger, yes?
Evans, yes. Evans, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we are at, Public Works, on the, it's been a lot of additional power projects.
Evening again.
Well, again, real quick.
I'm sure we'll have seamless integration.
Just take one minute.
All right, good evening, I'm Dave Field, Director of Public Works, Rich Terny, Water Operations Manager again. And we're here to just go through some of the, some of the many projects we have right now going on in the water. So I just want to talk quickly about, and the reason we we have some change orders and amendments to bring to to you tonight. So we thought it'd be a good opportunity to just give you an overview of where we stand on all these projects. We'll talk about Red Mill Road Treatment Plant, the PFOS plants, our water main replacement project, Bay Road Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project, and our hydraulic model update. So Red Mill Road, as you may know, it's a one point six-nine million gallon water treatment plant that treats water from wells three, five, and seven. It's going to be a green sand treatment plant that will remove iron and manganese to improve water quality. This has been in the master plan for many years. Pilot testing, design began in two thousand nineteen. Bids were actually put out in November of two thousand twenty-one. We had six contractors bid on the project. Construction started in February of two thousand twenty-two and we're scheduled for startup and testing this December. The picture on the right is the original site before we we broke ground. Let's see, that picture now is in March of last year, once the site was cleared. The project team can consist of environmental partners as a designer. Our Tyne Bond is our OPM or Owner's Project Manager. The contractor is Hart Engineering Corporation. And our applications engineers, Wood and Current, they handle all our skate integration with our existing skater system. The project budget, two point six-nine million for design and OPM, twelve million for construction, some other for fiber and applications engineering. And then we have a project contingency of one point three million. So we're currently forty-three percent complete. We have an available contingency of ten point six percent of our original contract costs. There have been no change orders to date, we have a couple minor change orders pending. But the the dollar value is so low, it's under a thousand dollars, that it's not worth to bring forth yet. We likely will have a couple of change orders, but right now, this project's gone very well. You know, minor hiccups with any type of construction, but in general, this has gone very well. Got some overhead drone shots, so you can see how we progressed from March twenty-two when the site was cleared. April, we were just starting the foundation work for the clear wells. Sloning clear wells in June. And the clear wells have been formed, we're working on more site grading. Clear wells, again, now we're starting the foundation work for the entire plant. The clear well is what runs, is basically the basement of the plant. It's where the final water gets contact time before it gets pumped out to the distribution system. And then the foundation is built on top of that. So the foundation is being built here in October. Here, the foundation and floor slab are complete in November. And if you're looking just north of that, above the, above that, it's actually the south, is the backwash basins, there's two backwash basins and rough grading at this time. And then in December, we started putting up the steel metal building. You can see some siding being clad on that building. Now roof panel's going on in February. And as of March, pretty much the envelope was depleted. So this is what it looks like last month, that's an interior shot. Some of the vessels are there, but they're not in the right places, they're just being stored temporarily. And you can see the facade of the building. That's actually the left side of that building is going to be the front door where people would go in. So that brings us to our concerns on PFOS. So at the time this plant was constructed, designed, and permitted, PFOS levels for mass DEP were required to be under twenty parts per trillion for the six PFOS compounds. So we did anticipate that something might happen in the future. Our PFOS levels may change in those wells or regulations may change. So we did include an area, in this area in the foreground here with those two large panels looking at you on the right side of the building, for PFOS treatment or other type of treatment if necessary. So we built it into the plan. We actually built that section of the plant higher so we could fit the vessels inside it. We thought we were kind of future-proofing this building, we didn't realize the future was now, unfortunately. So just last month, EPA proposed regulations that would result in us being in non-compliance with our current levels of PFOS in wells three, five, and seven right now. They're basically taking the levels down to zero, but it's four parts per trillion is what's detectable and plus some other health indexes. But right now, we would be, if that regulation, if and when that regulation does go into effect, we would be in non-compliance again. I should say not again, but we'd be in non-compliance with this because we've currently in compliance with the with the DEP regulations. But under these proposed regulations, we would not be in compliance. So we're currently recommending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of capital to begin design and permitting and procurement of PFOS treatment equipment, should those regulations come to fruition. And that puts us in line to apply for SRF loan funding for some of that construction in those vessels. Anyone have any questions on Red Mill Road or PFOS interaction with Red Mill Road? I'd be happy to.
If I could just add on to clarify for anyone who's watching at home, so nothing about the statement regulations have changed yet. But just in the span of when we started this work in two thousand nineteen in earnest from now, the EPA has shifted from having basically a non-enforceable lifetime exposure advisory level of semi-parts per trillion, which none of our wells ever hit, to the state taking a firmer stance and saying, we're going to do six of the thousands of PFOS out there and aggregate them and say if it's more than twenty, you're in violation. So that was three out of seven wells. But the other four were either non-detect or single-digit on average, so it wasn't, wasn't an issue. And now the very recently proposed regulation from US EPA is much stricter than mass DEP. And so we will prepare for that and build that in. Because what DEP has indicated, and I know Rich will be going to a meeting with them shortly, is that the way that their PFOS, the the state DEPs PFOS records is a big regulatory review every handful of years anyway, and that they intend to at least match, or at least that was what they have said, at least match federal standards. So we can have some level of confidence this is likely. There is no money attached to this federal regulation, although the EPA does point to the bipartisan infrastructure law, which is much appreciated. But a lot of that money is coming down through states in funding SRF revolving loan programs or for certain environmental justice communities, forgivable loans, Easton is not one. So there's no grants to offset this. So this, as we've been doing the whole time, we're going to do the right thing and design it, we're going to build it to the standards that are out there. But this will likely add substantial amounts to treatment, not only here, throughout Massachusetts and the United States certainly.
Any comments to add to your chief, Nigel?
Is there, I know bringing it down to zero, I, you know, there's no future state from zero, we can't go lower than that. But is there potential where if PFOS were to increase in the water, would that cause a need for a future state kind of planning situation?
So the PFOS does vary slightly seasonally as we test it, we test quarterly, well, monthly and quarterly, depending on the levels. I don't anticipate, hopefully PFOS, you know, going up significantly. I think, you know, what we're dealing with is more of the regulations going down. So our PFOS levels remaining in the same area. So in an area where we thought we were okay and didn't need to put in PFOS treatment, we're now looking at that. So it's going to be a significant cost issue.
It's more about filtering down to zero as opposed to capacity of it being a problem?
Exactly.
So just also remember, these are all unregulated contaminants right now under the federal oversight. Only Massachusetts has these particular six. So this past year, we started UCMR five and we tested for twenty-three new PFOS components, which they may be ones that the EPA will add to the future contaminants to this maximum national list.
I think an important thing here, as much as we don't like the impact on finances and construction of a kind of regulatory leapfrog, but my assessment will probably happen in the next thirteen years on this. Once these plants are built, we will have treatment plants of one type or another at six out of seven wells in Easton. So that doesn't mean there wouldn't be an incremental cost to swap out different types of treatment media. There's certainly going to be a meaningful impact on operational costs. But we will at least have these structures and treatment buildings in place at all the wells which have detected. To my knowledge, well, six is the only one that's been non-detect.
They're not detected, nine were detected.
That could change if instead of PFOS six, you're doing PFOS four thousand. But at least we will have six out of seven of that structure there. So.
Ideally, once, if that capital request is approved and everything goes through, how soon do you think you would begin?
That's a great question, if I had to crystal ball, we don't know what what this regulation in the implementation of this regulation is either at this point. So it's still in, it's still draft and still have comments. So it could change. You know, we have to plan for it to not change and to be what they say it's going to be. So we're going to go ahead and get ourselves ready.
Yeah.
Just like we did when we tested our wells in two thousand nineteen, way before, two thousand eighteen and nineteen, before DEP really was on the PFOS and we detected PFOS. We started getting ourselves ready and did PFOS preparedness study, which put us in line to build our PFOS treatment plants. Just unfortunately, we are at the point where the leapfrogging starts, because we went with a certain standard and now there may be a new standard, so that's the big issue here, so. I don't know, we'll we'll be ready to move and we'll start studying this if we get to capital appropriation, which I assume we we will, Town Meeting's will be the ultimate vote on that. And then we'll just have to see where this all shakes out.
Yeah, I think the first hearing is May from the US EPA. So we'll submit written comments to that, but we, it could be, sometimes this, these rulemaking processes, depending on what level of adjustment they want to make based on, it could take months or years.
One of the complications is getting the equipment to treat. So like you'll see in the next slide, we talk about our PFOS treatment plants. We actually had to go way ahead of time to get the vessels procured, because there's a year wait to get vessels. So with, especially with the new EPA regulation, that may even go up higher, because a certain amount of people make these giant vessels and everyone's going to be aligned for them, so.
And right now, I mean, I think the large majority, I'll go back and confirm this, but last I checked, the majority of states in the US don't have MCLs for PFOS. So they're going to go from a functionally no standard to an incredibly strict one. So it's going to be an incredible amount of demand on the market, a very finite amount of manufacturers, one of them scale-level building. This will cost hundreds of billions of dollars. But it doesn't mean it's not worth doing.
No, but it would be nice if you knew, you know, I think Easton had a vision to to look ahead down the road. I remember talking about this before, building extra capacity in space in these buildings for, should this happen. So, you know, I'm thinking about places that didn't think like that and built just for what they needed and now they'll have to go out and kind of start from scratch. So it might also actually be better if you have the end result of what you have to get instead of taking several steps to get there for for places that haven't done it. I think.
It's a bubble, hey, sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
Good to see you there.
He's a very large one.
I think I think it's great that this is being addressed and hopefully some of the lawsuits against some of the agencies that are creating the PFOS will do some good to help mitigate this. And I hope that they're spending time figuring out where they're going to put the filters with all of the PFOS, the PFOS leading filters, where do those go, how do they dispose of those?
Yeah, so generally, that's, that's generally activated carbon is burned off. And that the incineration of that carbon to regenerate it destroys the PFOS compound. So that's, that's, we, for our carbon plants, which we'll get into, you know, that it's just taken out and changed out and it gets regenerated and incinerated, so. So, sorry.
You indicated that there, at this point, there's no, there is or there is not opportunity for some loans to cover some of the costs of the equipment and plant modifications, et cetera?
So there are, so there's some low-cost loans available through the SRF process. The SRF process in Massachusetts, you have to get on the intended use plan, usually have to apply, get in basically over the summer. And then the next year, they'll tell you if you are on the plan and then sign the paperwork. We've done several SRF projects, all of our sewer projects were SRF loan projects. We did not go with SRF at the time for the Red Mill Road Treatment Plant or the PFOS Treatment Plants, because it was basically a cost benefit. treatment plants because it was basically cost benefit. The cost of money was very cheap, so the loan cost was basically the same. And the administrative costs associated with going for the S R F is a lot more hoops to jump through and approvals to get. So we did not go that way. In hindsight, it would have been great if we had gone that way because we could have set ourselves up for some potential loan forgiveness, but that's generally been reserved for those environmental justice communities and not us. But yes, if we go forward with this, we will, we will try to go through the S R F loan process, whether it's successful or not, that is anyone's guess, but my guess is PFAS, you know, would raise pretty highly in that process, but it's not a magic bullet. It's it's only a low cost loan. And we still are responsible for the, you know, the full vote on that.
Thank you.
Let me just ask Jamie. Jamie, did you have any comments or questions?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Speak up if I don't call on you.
I will do that. Thanks.
All right, I'll move on to the PFAS treatment plants. Nice little segue there. So our wells, one, two, and four, all had levels that required action under the M S D E P M C L of 20 parts per trillion for the six PFAS compounds. We began the treatment study in 2020. Ultimately, granular activated carbon is recommended to treat PFAS and remove those compounds. We bid the treatment vessels in November of 2021, even though we weren't done with the design of the plants, to get those vessels procured and on order. And then we did the construction of the plants in April of 2022. Construction began in June of 2022 and scheduled for a startup and testing this June. So it was a pretty tight timeframe. I think we're on it. There are some complications now with the new PFAS regulations, and I'll get into that in a minute. But our design team is Environmental Partners Group. The general contractor is West Construction Corporation. They actually built our Northeastern Village wastewater treatment plant. The vessel and media is being provided by Caligon Carbon Corporation. The design budget was 1.5 million, construction 7.2 million. The vessels themselves cost 1.6 or closer to 1.7, and we have a project contingency of 909,000. The current stats, we're about 49% complete. We have available 10.2% contingency and we have several pending change orders, which I'll get into, and that's what is on the agenda for following this. First is a contract amendment with Environmental Partners. It's environmental, it's amendment number four for $48,000 to increase the amount of resident representative services. We anticipated a certain amount of weeks of service and the construction is just going a little longer. Still within the contract time, we anticipated, but required more resident representative services, so we need to increase there. Change order number one for $73,000 change with Wes. It's for adding a flow meter at well one, a new bag filtration system, and that's a result related to changing the media in one of our wells. I'll talk about that in a second. Some bolt replacements and some float switches with Wes. And then with Caligon, we're going to be changing the media through the bench scale testing. We were planning on carbon, but during the bench scales, bench scale testing that we did during the construction, they came in while we're under construction and ran these different medias through just to make sure we're getting the best one. Well, two has higher level of PFAS and it's got a higher flow rate. So the thought was that we'd have too many changes of carbon. The carbon won't last as long. So there was a recommendation to change to an ion exchange resin, and that's a little more expensive. It'll last longer, but it's more expensive. So we're going to go through in well two and go to an ion exchange resin. So that and the a credit for the bolt replacement. So the bolt replacement that we're paying Wes for was related to the Caligon vessels. They shipped the wrong bolts. What Caligon is giving us a credit for what we're paying Wes to change those out. So it's a no cost to the town, but it's included in both of their change orders. So the substantial change order is for $284,000 for Caligon, basically for that ion resin exchange. And again, with PFAS treatment, we designed these under the D E P regulation and last month, you know, EPA is proposing something new. At this point, we believe that we can stay with the granular activated carbon at well one and four and go to the ion exchange resin at well two and then really monitor the performance in the field of how well two does and look at the cost benefit, whether we should change to a resin, the other two as well. And this is really just, it comes down to a cost benefit feature. We're looking at bench scale testing that's given us examples, but it's a recommendation to put it actually in full scale production and evaluate how well two does. The carbon will do quicker changes to meet the new EPA regulation. So based on that, we may end up going to a resin, but we don't need the resin at this point. So again, that's why we're having this change order and the impacts of the new potential regulations will just result in us changing this, these mediums quicker, just more operational cost. And just, here's just a shot from the Gary Lane site on well one. So this is the Gary Lane, end of Gary Lane where there's houses. You really can't see the PFAS treatment plants. There's a small, on the left is a site, a picture of the drying beds. That's a backwash drying bed similar to the Red Mill Road drying beds. It's when we backwash the filters, which is dries and evaporates to the ground. And the probably ugliest structure you've ever seen on the right, that is, that is the PFAS treatment building. Luckily, no one can see these from the work road. There are utilitarian structures that house these filters. They're, the scale is huge.
They're tall. They're 30 feet tall. The filters are 30 feet tall.
So, you know, these are pretty ugly buildings, so we didn't do any favors to the architects in the, in the area, but it's really never going to be seen by most people. So unless there's a tour for ribbon cutting, most people will never see these. It's really just utilitarian. Do we have any questions on the PFAS treatment plants? I know, you know, we're looking forward to these being up and running and us to be in compliance with the M S D E P regulation. At that point, we can take away the blue drop filter and we'll be supplying, you know, water that's below the the state standard to everyone in Easton. And I think it's going to be a huge relief and a weight off of Rich and his staff. We have to send a quarterly notice now reminding people that we're in non-compliance and take that, you know, and pay a lot of money to have a blue drop filter at the water division. So it'll be good when this is done and June can't come quick enough. Any comments, Rich, or?
No, but like, like you both pointed out about the the media, that really is the bane of all this is to find out how long that material holds up. And, you know, once, once these facilities go online, the last thing we want to find out is that we have to change out the media within a year. So it's kind of like one of those things where you really want to get this treatment going, but also you need to have some understanding of how long is that media going to last in these vessels. And from an operational perspective, if you're having to, you know, change out this media less than two years, you really have to go back and look at the other option, which resin may give us a longer longevity in these filters and that may save the town more money by doing that.
And just to give perspective, the ion exchange resin is 10 times more expensive than.
I'm going to ask that.
So it's more expensive, but it'll give us a longer life. It's really a cost benefit. And we'll, we'll evaluate that. They are developing new media right now, too. There's new media being developed, so hopefully it'll be something that's bigger and better and works better. Hopefully it's cheaper. So we'll know that as we go forward. So if there's no questions, move on to water main. I'll go quick on these next few projects, but the indoor water main replacements, we've been lucky, we're funding $1.25 million a year now for water main replacements. And the reason is we want to keep our system, our distribution system in a good, state of good repair. As you can see by the graph in the middle here, water main breaks have trended upwards over the last 22 years since we've been keeping track of this format. So it's really needed to, we have pipes that's eight from, that was put in 1887. So and a good majority of our pipe was put in between the 40s and the 80s. So we're coming up on 50 to 75 year lifespan on some of these pipes. So we want to take out some of the underperforming and older pipes in our system and try to do that on a systematic basis. So the current project we have right now is the Foundry Street water main. And that includes North Naff, small piece of North Naff, small piece of Foundry Street. We're using 1.5 million that's been appropriated over the last two years. We're requesting another 1.5 million going forward. And we're replacing that eight inch older water main that was underperforming. We had a lot of breaks on that area and we're upgrading it to a 12 inch, which will help in conjunction with the new Red Mill Road treatment plant to give a better hydraulic capacity in that area. This was designed and bid in 2022. We anticipate construction to start in the late summer, early fall, but last year and still to this day, it's tough to get pipe. So water pipe was a commodity. You could not really get it. It had about a, you know, six months to a year lead time. So our contractor is C Notton, and they were able to get the pipe and start the project this, this winter. Time bonded the design for us and C Notton, who also did the five quarter sewer and water project, is our contractor. They started in February. Project's 225% complete money wise, but they've installed all the main line to date and now we're just working on services. So we anticipate that the project will be complete in June and the final paving will have happened by then. And on the water mains, we're going to, as soon as we're done with that, we're going to start designing of our next water main projects. We have a couple of candidates that we're looking at to replace older pipe in Northeastern Village and we also have Prospect Street. Bay Road storage, water storage tank, 1.58 million was appropriated last year. It's for the rehabilitation of this tank. It was built in 1957 and was last cleaned and painted in 2007. Work includes upgrades for electrical equipment, security, new mixing system, and a new epoxy paint job that's currently being designed by Environmental Partners and hopefully will be out to bid this late spring or summer. And then hydraulic model, which with $50,000 is appropriated last year. Time Bond is doing the design on this. We're currently in draft format right now, but basically this is a model, you take the entire system, you model it and then you actually go out and do pressure testing to figure out what your actual conditions are in the field so you can calibrate that model. So we can use this to tell us a lot of features about our distribution system, where we have issues, where we have pressure issues or hydraulic issues, and it will let us know scenarios. If we shut off this pump and run this pump, who gets what water and we can, we can try to narrow down on some things. So it's a, it's a nice tool to have, especially when you're dealing with future water main projects, it might help raise some projects above others if there is a hydraulic benefit to it. That's all I have on the water.
That's all.
That's all. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can get into the change orders.
Jen, so I have seen no questions because this was extremely thorough and I think you're building upon things we've been hearing about. So thank you for that very thorough summary.
Very thorough.
I take thorough being long. I'm sorry.
No, no, I would tell you for too long. No, not at all.
Just that we've had conversations in the past about the Red Mill Road plan in terms of some barrier so that my neighbors will feel a little bit more comfortable with that. Have we settled on a plan for that yet or is that something that's going to happen in the future?
Yeah, there's, there's a plan in place that will go out and put in those, those plantings, select plantings. So it's on the plan. That won't be until probably the spring of 2024, but there's, there's a chance that we'll get to some of them maybe this fall if the site work is progressed enough. But our main focus is getting that plant up and running, started and tested so we can provide some cleaner water, take out that 100 and 80s. But it's on the plan and we will get to it.
Thank you.
Jamie, any questions?
Uh, no, thank you both, Dave and Rich. Appreciate it.
So I think it's great. I think it's worth pointing out that we don't see the construction of these when we're driving down the street or it's not like general party conversation. So much work is going on behind the scenes that this is on top of all the other roadway construction and other big D P W construction projects. So I appreciate the detail. The thoroughness is well appreciated and also the pictures because there are a lot of places that I would ever drive by and see. Most people are not going to see those. Like you said, you can't see them from the street or from the neighborhood.
These are gated areas, so most people don't have access. So we're happy to give tours when these things are ready, but again, these are not most features that most people are going to see all the time.
Right. But I appreciate the excellent work that you do and your team in keeping us up to date on it.
I just want to add particularly, Dave, thank you always, but Rich, Rich joined our team basically as the entire drinking water industry was getting turned upside down by these regulatory changes. And, you know, we knew that that was coming to an extent. And when we were interviewing folks, we were really looking for people with experience with shore and large systems who had managed treatment plans. Easton had not for our entire history because up until this very new moment in regulatory time that we're in, our water was not only compliant, it was bored winning. And for Rich, Rich had it running for three years including COVID. I mean, managing close to 30 million in these capital projects has been no small feat. To your point, a lot been out of the public view, just kind of quietly working. So thank you, Rich, for your work.
Thank you.
All right, so we want to vote on these amendments. Thank you, I'm going to answer item 10 through one, two, and three.
Yeah, if you would like, if you do a slate, we grouped it this way just so you know it wasn't seven pages long.
So the slate is $106,177.79, so that's going to come out of the available project contingency of about 910 million.
910,000.
I'm sorry, 910,000.
So move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
And yes.
Thank you. So the next one is discussion and vote also on D P W 2023-11 change order number one with Phoenix Communications for fiber off to cable relocation on Depot Street.
Yes, thank you. This is a change order to an existing contract. We're adding $25,360 to Phoenix Communications other contract, which is under I T C 68 state bid. And we're paying for this through the $129,000 community compact municipal fiber grant. And this was related to some pole relocations and extending and splicing fiber optics that were existing on those poles and to move and be spliced. So that's, that's the reason for this. The work has already happened. We didn't anticipate quite the extent of the cost, so that's why we've come back to add a change order in to make that happen.
Okay, any questions? No questions?
Move to approve change order number one for contract D P W 2023-11, the amount of $25,360 paid to Phoenix Communications.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes.
Barger, yes.
Great. All right, item 12, change order for the town offices rehabilitation project.
That's rich, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you. You all.
Can we direct this one? We'll take the point on this one.
You need to hear me go. Before you is change orders four and five for the exterior repairs to town hall. Change order four, the first portion is for rehabilitation of the well had covered for the well located on the grounds. It's corroded, it's failing, it needs to be saved. This restoration feature will cost about $13,230 and it will now be safe to put back on wellhead. Second item under change order four is during the course of construction, while we're replacing gutters, we found 20 roof slates that need replaced. In fact, we knew that that was going to happen. We had a cost in the contract. We exceeded our initial amount. So at a cost of $150 per slate, we replaced 20 slates, so for a cost of $3,000. Change order five is for after we repaired, we abated all the windows, removed all the lead and all the asbestos, we front all the windows and we installed them. There were some damages and scratches that occurred before the part of the main. We didn't know if we'd be able to afford replacement at that time, so we waited to the end of the project. By doing so, now that the windows have been abated and. By doing so, now that the windows have been abated and, uh, decontaminated, the contractor can come and replace those, uh, glass paintings on site at a substantial savings for the town. Uh, if we had done that as part of the original contract, it would cost us in the neighborhood twenty thousand dollars. Uh, but now, because the windows have been abated and they can do everything on site, uh, the contractor gave us a price of three thousand dollars, uh, to fix all of these scratch glass. So, we will have, uh, fix all of the notoriously cleaned, they're very well cleaned, uh, the glass paintings as part of this project.
Those three thousand or thirty-eight hundred?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty. Oh, thirty-eight hundred, I'm sorry, I goes again, yes, thirty-eight hundred. Um, but still, it's a substantial cost savings.
Yeah.
To the town. So, those two will bring the, the, these two amendments will bring the total cost of the twenty thousand, thirty, twenty thousand, thirty dollars, um, bringing the project almost to completion. We'll still have sixteen thousand dollars left to continue to see, but we're here. Uh, I know this project's been going on for a little over a year. We had a slowdown for the winter, uh, storm doors and storm windows. And we start, again, we deliver it on Thursday. We'll start those installations after our mock-up on Friday. So, once again, we will see some activity around here and wrapping up. Uh, when this is done, we'll do before and after pictures to show everybody that you might not remember what it looked like, even though it was last year, uh, but we haven't realized. Uh, but we're getting close.
And then Public Works is doing some in-house work as well with something, plumbing and some interior work.
Yeah, so, um, we're, we've done the foyer again. As some of you may notice, we're working on the front doors for ADA access at this point. Um, we have to redo the front, uh, circle to bring everything into ADA compliance. Uh, before we can do that, we need to repair the septic system. Um, that's been an ongoing issue. We finally have a chance to do that. Um, and now we have a chance to update some of the plumbing in addition to it. So, it's really given the Town Hall a face left, um, to make everything work like it should.
So, what are, what are the features of the ADA compliance in the, in the front entry and in the roadway?
So, the, the front entrance is the big one, is the concrete slab leading up to the doors. It has a five percent pitch on it. You don't notice it being so steep, um, because of how short it is. But there's a step up, okay, so there's a step up and there's a ramp to it. So, we're going to take out the front concrete slab, pour it level, and then we're gonna bring the driveway to, bring the driveway up to me to, uh, to ADA grade. So, everything will be a seamless transition, uh, when we're all set and done. It'll, it'll be noticeable when you see it. But that'll be done, it's, you know, one of the dominoes we're hoping to, to follow this time.
Any other comments, questions? Jamie, anything from you?
No, thank you.
Want to move to approve DPW twenty twenty-two, twenty-five, change orders four and five, total amount of twenty thousand and thirty dollars.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
Evans, yes.
All right, is that it for you?
Yeah, I hope so.
Thank you.
All right, item fourteen, vote to authorize the town to re-apply to the aggregate community choice supply price contract or term up to three years?
Uh, thank you, Dottie. So, uh, I'm actually double checking now. I'm not certain, did the pricing information baited into your packet? It did?
Should be.
Should be, okay. Well, if not, uh, we asked based on the meeting with Colonial Power, uh, at your last meeting, where they just gave kind of an update of the performance of our energy aggravation plan, uh, getting ready to have the town position to go to market again and execute another three-year agreement. Uh, our current three-year fixed rate is from, uh, November of two thousand and twenty. It ends in November of two thousand and twenty-three. Tidying event ended up being really, really, really fortuitous, uh, for us, uh, and has saved millions, uh, for the community, uh, compared to market rates here in grid. Uh, so, based on some examples, uh, indicative pricing that we've seen from Colonial Power for some of their other clients, depending on the amount of, uh, years you go, uh, and depending on the supplier on a given day, we are seeing prices closer to, uh, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen cents per kilowatt hour, which is still substantially better than the winter rate we're seeing now. It's not substantially above the current proposed summer rate for grid, which I think is fourteen and change. Uh, but what we wanted to, uh, do was have the board authorize me within some parameters on those prices. What we're suggesting is for a term up to three years, uh, and to execute an agreement on the board's behalf for a successor contract to start, uh, this November, not to exceed fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. So, that's only marginally above the summer rate that we think is coming. We can't predict the future, but winter rates this winter were over thirty cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, so, we're hoping we can do a little better than that, but it's gonna depend on a, a prices that day. So, they're anticipating around Wednesday. If there was not a combination of duration and rate that fit under that, then I wouldn't move forward. And I would just, you know, the volume, we could figure out a plan from there.
Do you think you need more room for fifteen cents? I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to moving it up to sixteen or seventeen percent. I, I'd hate for you to have to come back and be like, yeah, it was fifteen point five, you know, or, or something like that, and we didn't give you enough negotiating room.
Uh, I'm happy for the board to do so. This was ballpark that Colonial suggested. I'm still, even if you set sixty or sixty-two, I'm gonna try and get it as low as possible, because even if we were doing better than market, folks here have been used to ten cents for three years now. So, it's going to be noticeable. Uh, so, we, we want to minimize that to the extent we can, um, without being shortsighted and going for a six-month contract or something every time. So.
I just feel like you kind of have to, it's a judgment call on, on that day, based on the research and the data. And as long as you have enough room, you think that that's enough, and that's what they can tell us, you're saying, then that's fine. But just wanted to double check that. Any questions, comments? Jamie?
No, thank you.
I move to authorize the town administrator to procure aggregate, uh, supply for Easton's Aggregate Community Choice Supply Price Contract for a term of up to three years, and to execute any agreements on the town's behalf related thereto for prices not to exceed fifteen cents per kilowatt hour for basic service.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
All right, perfect. Good luck, Connor. Um, item fourteen, town administrator update, municipal facilities replacement, release fire DPW feasibility planning.
I've had many major updates today. Uh, we're still working on, uh, more, uh, survey and wetland work, uh, negotiating with Stonehill on that component and, um, associated kind of real estate-related projects. We do have flagging and the survey work now ongoing at Central School, uh, as well. So, um, those things are all moving forward. We are still, uh, tracking for May for schematic, uh, design phase budget in the Municipal Building Committee. I should have more information at the next meeting in April.
Next is the review, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, annual town meeting warrant draft.
Sure. Uh, attached to your packet is the most current version of the annual town meeting warrant. Um, there are only two articles before you tonight. Uh, if you leave the remainder of articles, it will be financial related, which we will, uh, deal with, uh, with a hopefully balanced budget at your next meeting, April twenty-four, and a capital plan, uh, Director Nightingale and I are going to have a capital debate to review tomorrow night, uh, and planning articles at your first meeting in May. So, uh, these are kind of the last low-hanging, uh, articles, so to speak. So, the first one is Article ten, that we're recommending an inclusion and a recommendation on, which would rescind thirty thousand dollars of borrowing authorized in two thousand and nineteen uh, for the turf and track replacement. That must got a stadium that's no longer needed, because the project was completed, that amount was not spent. So, this will just take it off the books.
So, I move to, uh, include and recommend Article ten.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes.
Thank you. Article eleven, uh, is to appropriate, as the board may recall, you saw a mid-year free cash certification update. The town, uh, through Assistant Town Administrator Plan Chart, has been managing a variety, uh, of claims as part of, uh, the Massachusetts opioid litigation association's class actions against various pharmaceutical manufacturers and distributors, including, uh, a new broader package that the board just signed off on recently. Uh, settlement agreements have been negotiated at the state level, and the towns of the Commonwealth need to appropriate those funds out for specific types of uses related to drug intervention and recovery as, uh, a financial damage paid by these companies to the communities that they've harmed, uh, through the opioid epidemic. This is just an appropriation article. We need to do this in order to put it in a segregated fund, which is a, a part of the settlement agreement. If you don't appropriate it, it ends up just closing the free cash, it becomes harder to track. We don't want that. Uh, we are currently working internally to, uh, go through the settlement agreements and cross-check that to the current services we're providing to the town and the school department that line up with eligible expenses, uh, and are looking towards, uh, the state as far as what they've done over there, opioid task force, as far as, uh, once we've established what are the things we're already doing that fit within these parameters for funding? What's the capacity for any kind of potential additional programming? So, I, Michael's done a lot of work on this. Uh, do you want to just kind of weigh in, give a little bit more, uh, context to where we think this is heading and?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, I think you really hit most of it. Um, you know, the, the, the Greenleaf provided a broad list of abatement strategies in town to employ, uh, many of which we were to do. Um, and I think Connor, you know, mentioned, you know, so it's a surprise to anyone, we have a revenue issue. And so, our first priority would be to determine what we're doing and make sure we can continue to do those very successful programs, and then start to look at what else we could offer, without overcommitting ourselves and not having enough funds to do that. So, it'll be, I think it'll be a good process, we'll include the public. Uh, but as Connor mentioned, this is simply just an accounting exercise. This is not committing the money in any particular direction.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
Just thank you, Mike, for all the hard work you've been doing this. I know it's been a lot of work, and it's been, so thank you.
Likewise.
I move to include and recommend Article ten.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Evans, yes. Evans, yes.
All right. Any other ones we can?
Uh, no, it was only the two of us, so there's a, the operating capital budget should be your next meeting. I will try to get an update as well on solar lease article. And then we believe the planning department is on track for coming in on May first. And that should be everything, but we will definitely go back and make sure we have them sitting.
So, we have an executive session, or wait a second. We get the acceptance of, um.
Sorry, you're on item sixteen.
Item sixteen. So, um, so I'm just leaving my track here. So, are we gonna have an executive session where this, after it's come up?
Uh, yeah, so sixteen is open session, it's just a performance review.
Right. All right, so, um, let me just put my notes on that completely here. So, every year, before we go into the town election season, while we have, uh, we have the board, or I should start it off like this. After the election season, the people that are seated on this floor more likely have an administrator to establish goals and objectives for the following year. So, before the next election cycle starts again, the people that made those goals and objectives measure that performance. So, we didn't have any change over in the board last year, but I just wanted people to know why it happens in that timeframe. So, each of the select board members, uh, sent, took the goals and objectives from last year, sent it to me, and I compiled them all into a list, and, um, let me pull that up. Let's begin one slow one. Okay, so, I'm just gonna run through and talk about some of the highlights, and just kind of tell you, uh, it was a very good, uh, exceptional, in fact, uh, performance review. We evaluated Connor on eleven, um, eleven, uh, categories. The first one was finance. And the way it works is the town administrator does a subtle evaluation, and he gives commentary, and whether he meets, exceeds, or, uh, does not meet the requirements. So, for finance, Reed, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you the categories and then how everybody weighed in. So, for finance, Reed said meets expectations. Full Genetti said exceeds, Barger said exceeds, Lamb said meets, Stebbins says exceeds, and Stacy says exceeds. For infrastructure, facilities, and public works, Reed says exceeds. Full Genetti, follow up, Barger, Lamb, Stebbins, and Stacy all agreed and said exceeds. For climate and energy policy, Reed says meets. Uh, the full board, uh, also said meets in that condition. Uh, planning and economic development, Reed said meets, the full board agreed meets. Uh, public sa, health, safety, and community wellness, Reed said meets, the full board said exceeds. Quality of life, community engagement, and inclusivity, Reed said exceeds, and the board concurred, all said exceeds. Human resource management, labor relations, and organizational stability, Reed said exceeds, the full board agreed exceeds. Town government efficiency, effectiveness, and resiliency, Reed said meets. Uh, Full Genetti said meets, Barger said exceeds, Lamb said exceeds, Stebbins and Stacy both said meets. Service and support to the select board, Reed said meets. Full Genetti and Barger said exceeds, Lamb said meets, and Stebbins and Stacy also said exceeds. Inter, and intra-governmental relationships, Reed said meets. Full Genetti, Lamb, Stebbins, and Stacy said exceeds, Barger said meets. Personal and professional growth, Reed said exceeds, and the board agreed, each member said exceeds. So, it's a pretty comprehensive, um, evaluation. Each one of those sections has, uh, a narrative with it, and it will go on the town's website. But I do want to, uh, open it up to the board to see if anybody had anything that stuck out for them or a general overall comment on the evaluation. So, I can start with you, Jen.
Um, as always, it's really, really difficult to find things that Connor doesn't do well. Um, so, you know, you try to look with the lens of, of finding those things and understanding where the opportunity is. I think there are some spaces where we have, um, room for you to grow in your leadership capacity, but most part you did a phenomenal job, and, um, you've been a pleasure to work with, so.
All right.
Much in the same. Um, Connor, I think you are your biggest critic. Uh, nobody can be hotter on you than you are on yourself, and by virtue of that, you keep the bar very, very high, and you continue to hit it. And what that does is it sets examples for all your department heads. And, uh, look around at the department heads, and they're outstanding. They set the bar high, because you lead by example. So, uh, thank you, and please continue.
Thank you. I have absolutely enjoyed working with you for the last six years. Um, I, I concur with my colleagues that you are tougher on yourself than, than, than you should be. Um, I think that you have, you're incredibly thoughtful, you're creative. Um, you've got a great way of, of, of working with people. And I've said this every year since two thousand seventeen. I was the, hopefully, third vote to hire you in two thousand seventeen, and I have never, ever regretted that decision in six years.
I was wondering if you're gonna say that.
That, that's just going to replace the entire twenty-two page document next year. Make sure Craig says it each year.
So, your success is since Craig.
It's a team. I, I don't think it's going. It's a joke. It's, it's not really. I mean, that was not easy for two that are here and one that's not. Uh, it was very difficult, it was a difficult meeting, uh, and, and process. And so, it's, it's appreciated.
Jamie?
A hallmark of a, uh, a leader is one that never stops. Learning and continuing to ask questions of themselves and being well-read. And, uh, you continue to, to do just that, to continue to learn and bring add value, uh, not just to the position, uh, but to, uh, the community. Uh, and it's your, it's your personal growth, right? The, the things that you provide, uh, as a leader, uh, and your desire to grow as a person, and giving back, not just, and I wrote this pretty explicitly in my feedback, is that pretty explicitly in my feedback, is that you're giving back not just to the town of Easton, you're giving back to uh to greater society, so. Keep doing your work.
Very much. Thank you, Jamie.
So I agree with what everyone said, and just to like pull out a few highlights. Uh, one of the things that really struck out, struck to me is that we talk a lot about succession planning, and you know, we run a very lean organization, and we have to really be thinking um, you know, about how how do things look now, but how do things look, you know, when people are retiring or our positions are changing and down the road? What do we do to protect the organization, so to speak, of of town services? And you know, a lot of times we have to zig and zag around some of these things that come up. And if you don't have a lot of forward thought on succession planning, you can really run into a lot of trouble. And I know that Connor has that as an underpinning of all of these categories with all the departments. Uh, for finance, our finances are strong. We we've got an exceptional bond rating again once once again this year. Our uh sta- stabilization fund is healthy. Um, we've gotten about half a million dollar in new grants this year outside of ARPA, the MSBA reimbursement, SEMREIT grants, ESER, et cetera. So uh that's a real testimony for, you know, how our our departments work. We've got the GFOA, uh distinguished budget award. I think, you know, the expectation is that we're so used to getting the top bar all the time. It's almost a little unfair because we have, you have set the bar high, but we have very high expectations because we usually uh meet or exceed what these goals are. And it just sounds kind of like, oh yeah, these exceptional again, but I think that we really need to think about that a little bit. It's a lot of work to ask for for one person, what but your team, the whole department of four uh to accomplish this is really amazing. Um, the infrastructure, facilities, and public works, you know, we've had, we've just had ongoing construction all the time, whether it's roads or like we saw tonight with the water treatment facility. It just happens. We know it's happening. Um, they they come in, it, the work is done correctly. Uh, it's usually on time. It's usually on on or at budget. Um, the climate and energy, you know, even though we have goals and objectives throughout the year, you're kind of adding things to that. So looking at maybe in the future doing uh an energy policy and uh, you know, always thinking ahead to those next steps. Um.
I do just want to flag that if I could, Donnie, because Jen, you flagged that as well in your written comments that I assume in your ones tonight. We are working on becoming more comprehensive there. We do have funding requests outstanding um for the capital budget, just given the level of need that's probably not getting funded this spring, what we have filed through the state one stop for growth process for master plan funding to consolidate and synthesize the uh, I think a substantial amount of efforts we are making, but have been being coordinated on a ad hoc basis uh to make sure that we're continuing to push in that area.
Excellent.
Excellent. And that wasn't something that we talked about prior, so that's something that you're bringing bringing forward now. Um, the planning and economic development, uh, there's been a lot of work with that. You know, uh, there's some things that we can't control, some things we we're trying to control. Uh, we have, you know, I think that that's something that has, you know, always, it's evolving and and you have to wait for the right time. You have to know when to strike when the iron is hot. And some, a lot of that's outside of our control, but trying to set up the environment where we can have good economic developments, uh, you know. It's it's a work in progress, so I think that we're always gonna be looking at that. Um, public health, safety, and community wellness has been amazingly transformed over the past couple of years, and we have uh more mental health facility support. Um, uh, the paramedicine is really going well, so these are really transformational changes within that department. Um, quality of life, community engagement, and inclusivity. Uh, the town administrator is supporting a lot of community-based efforts and programs. Um, you know, everything that we do, you also have to remember a lot of it's administrative work related and then thinking about how does that affect the well-being of the community, making sure to include that. Um, human resources management, we, Connor negotiated all the union contracts and uh, you know, does that in a way that builds trusted relationships with the unions, uh works under the guidelines that the board sets forward, and doing that with a level of appreciation to the people that work for the town is a really delicate balance, and I think that that's something, when we did hire you, that we were concerned about and thinking about, you know, how is that gonna work? And you've uh, you beat the expectations on that every year, so congratulations on that one. Um, let me see, the town government efficiency, effectiveness, and resiliency. Resiliency is something that really could be used in every single one of these uh categories, but um advancing cybersecurity is a really important issue. Uh, you know, it has been. It's been hard to get it up to the plate because we've had budget constraints, so getting grants to make some of these things happen is really great.
Um, we've built a lot of capacity. We're in a lot of things coming down the pipe there that you'll start seeing soon. Just the, you know, in in term stakeholder meetings for that project have more people than our department head meetings. It's 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 eye opening.
And you know, the police department receiving their accredited, reaccreditation uh code of conduct for elected and elected and appointed officials. Uh, a couple of highlights there. Um, service and support to the select board, I think you're available to, I think everybody noted that you're available to each of us um inde- independently when we have questions. I think that that's really important, that every member of this board feels that they're an important member and that they have access to ask you questions and get uh timely responses and thorough responses anytime they need it. Uh, inter and intra governmental relationships, um, you know, is, who mentioned it? I think Jamie was the one who said that um, you know, working with this board is great, working with this town is great, but you also work across uh other boundaries and regions and the state as well, very well recognized. And professional approach in the business, uh with all of this work and, you know, a family and a life and hobbies outside of this, you, it's really hard to balance all that, and I think you're doing a really good job with that as well. So did you have anything that you wanted to highlight or comment or?
Uh, just to say thank you and um, uh, you know, we had some of it tonight with public works in particular is always a really um kind of obvious example because of the very uh concrete, you know, unintentional nature of what they're doing. Uh, but we have really exceptional people here. Uh, I've been here long enough. I've been doing this long enough now, but I uh have been able to really enjoy seeing the leadership team grow and and change with a lot of folks that we've been able to hire, uh, and I'm very proud of the work that they do um and the the staff as well. You mentioned collective bargaining. This was probably one of the most challenging environments for labor management negotiations in in decades. Um, and we were able to coll- collaboratively without mediation with any unions uh reach reasonable agreements um uh to do right by our workforce, but try to balance the long-term finances of the town, which is incredibly hard uh because of the structural revenue deficit that we're very aware of. So to be able to do that, you know, top out our stabilization funds as we sunset um COVID relief dollars, it's it's been um, it's been great. I'm very, very lucky to have Michael, Elizabeth, and Mary in my office, and I'm uh fortunate to work with you as well. So thank you. And the community is uh been great as well. Uh, remarkably patient with all the roadwork and construction, and uh it's it's been a, it's been a good run, and I would like to keep that going, so.
Excellent. All right, well, uh, would, so would you like to make a motion to accept the um town administrator's evaluation as noted in the packet?
With pleasure.
Carter, second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Evans, yes.
Evans, yes.
Excellent. And this will be posted on the town website. I hope that people um that are watching this meeting, I encourage them to read the evaluation. Uh, I think you'd be really surprised by the level of detail of all the work that's happening. That's one of the things that, you know, most people, before they get to know town government or in the citizens academy, uh, people are generally very surprised at the amount of work that happens um through Connor's office uh and as a result of all the departments that we have. So take a look at that and see the comments. Um, it's worth a read, so. So for executive session, to, um, I just want to make sure that I have the um, should we do the the other items first and then go into executive session for both and then come back to open session?
Uh, well, you have to come back anyway, so it's your call. It's whatever your preference is on the items.
Let's just kick off eighteen through twenty-one so that I don't forget them while we come back. And then we, we'll make a motion to go into executive session to come back into open. Does that work?
Yeah.
All right. So item eighteen is the acceptance of March twenty-seventh minutes.
Move to approve.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Um, approval only of executive session minutes to March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So move on.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bajra and Lamb.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Town administrator notes.
Uh, I do not have any to add.
Does the same town administrator anything?
No.
Okay. Select word notes? I'm not hearing that. All right. Um, so we, I will take the motion in a second, and a roll call vote to go into executive session on purposes two and three of Mass General Law Thirty A. Section twenty-one A respectively respectively to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Connor read, and to discuss litigation relating to break builders. Uh, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So we will uh vote enter into executive session to return back to open session.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Evans, yes.
Okay, excellent.
If you uh, if you go back four P M.
All right, so we are back and um. Oh, sorry. So we are back and uh after our executive session, I just want to congratulate Connor. Um, we have voted to extend your contract to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, which as you noted is your, will be your tenth year as town administrator. So that's coming up really fast, so. Uh, we unanimously voted on that and uh we'll, and also uh some other um, some other contracts uh language that will be posted online uh with your contract. Is that how I would say that? Getting tired.
Uh, yes, it was amended extension through January twenty-seventh, so thank you.
All right, uh, so are you gonna take another public vote right now?
Open session.
So.
Craig? Oh, Bajra, yes. Uh, make a motion to to accept the the contract through uh two thousand twenty-seven.
The amended contract.
Amendment contract.
Uh, second, Lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb, roll call vote.
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Evans, yes.
And did anybody have any comments they wanted to share with Connor before we sign off?
Glad to have you for another year. Really, we're very lucky to have you in this community. Thank you for all the hard work you've put in to make this place better and look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mark?
Same.
I'm not gonna say it, but I I, congratulations and thank you for the work that you do on behalf of this board and this town.
Jamie?
Yeah, I look forward to working and continue to work with you, Connor, so.
Thanks, Jamie.
And it was an excellent review, uh, excellent evaluation, and we're glad that you will uh stay with us through the end of twenty twenty-seven. So uh congratulations, and uh with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You didn't, you didn't vote, you didn't say Full Genetti, yes.
Sure.
Positive.
Full Genetti, yes.
There you go.
Thank you, good talking.
Yeah, well, this was an important one.
Thank you, Mark.
You know, it's it's confusing during the roll call because everybody's not in the same places. It's easier when it's all on Zoom or it's on here, so thank you.
I thought she did. Now I need to go back and watch the video.
You were better to say yes twice.
It is, it is. Absolutely.
Watch the replay. Um, but in any event, uh, it was a unanimous vote. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?
Stacy, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes.
Bajra, yes.
Stevens, yes.
All right, well, thanks for being here, Jamie. We appreciate you
Nice to be here, Jamie.
making the effort to get here by Zoom.
Thanks. Have a good night. See you guys.
Bye, Karen.
Thank you. We got it. Sign off.